We'll convene as the drainage trustees. Need approval of drainage claims.
No claims for today.
We need minutes of the last meeting, please.
Last meeting was April seventh, twenty twenty five. The Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the drainage district. With the following members present, Rick Rasmussen, Dean Clues, Lynn Luke's, Ashley Bosch via Zoom and Betty Ellis. Also present were Courtney Morris Strange Administrator and Amanda Meyer Auditor. Other interested parties were Robert Watts via Zoom. Motion by Rasmussen and seconded by Clues to call the meeting for motion carried. A conference call with Humboldt County Trustees began at nine fifteen AM to review and take action on memorandum of understanding. Regarding establishment of procedures for drain drainage district repairs. Present on conference call were Humboldt County Supervisors Bruce Remmers, Andy Looney, Rick Peterson, Mike Carpenter and Bob Rasmussen. There's Ericson Auditor and Terry Snufflebean, the Deputy Auditor. Motion by Wright County Dean Clues, seconded by Humboldt County Mike Carpenter to approve the memorandum of understanding with Humboldt County. To establish procedures in regards to joint drainage districts repair. Uh work authorizing county drainage trustees to do repairs up to fifteen thousand dollars. All eyes motion carried. There were no drainage claims needing approval. There were no minutes needing approval. There was one work order that was reviewed and approved. For DD thirty six in section one of Lake Township. It was for a televising tile of her possible plug. There were no drainage invoices needing approval. Motion back to this and seconded by Ellis to adjourn the meeting. Motion carried.
Any additions or corrections? Not they stand approved as read. Hey, review on actually drainage work orders.
Uh the two that I had for today, um the first one, the original was for Ashley. It was a request by Mike Coleman. And Drainage District sixty two, section six of Woolstock. Uh he came in and reported a washout that it needed to be dug down and find the tile and replace broken pipe going into the drainage ditch. And the second one, the original was for Lynn and DD one eighty four, section twenty of Iowa. This was recorded by Lance Aldridge. And he came in and reported a plug tile stating the pick and bottom intake is broken off in the south ditch nearly flush with the ground. The bigger problem is it doesn't seem to be draining or very slowly into the open intake. One two I had and then Dean you had.
Uh I was contacted by Darwin Jacobson concerning a a washout. Washout is actually in uh the Glenley Trust property just across the fence line in a waterway. Um and I've talked to Rick Lee who's uh Glenn's son that that actually farms it. So he's aware that uh that I'm submitting this work request. It is in section twenty four of Woolstock Township. Uh Drainage District one forty nine. It's a thirty six inch tile that's blown out. Uh the blowouts uh just north of the fence line between the Glenly Trust and Darwin Jacobson property. Uh in the waterway and I sent you pictures and I've got it detailed on the map here so.
The one for Ashley, I did have her go out and check out that area. Um and see what was going on there. We did get some pictures from the the tenant that came in and recorded it.
It was flagged. Another thing you said that it wasn't flagged yet, but now it is flagged. And the officials did justice.
Anything else? And the Lance Aldridge, um since that intake is in the roadway, I talked to secondary roads to make a work order on that. So they can repair the intake and check for blockage.
And then on, I think Hennekers has started working back on the drainage ditch over here again. And um you might want to follow up with them on, because I think they.
Are you seeing?
Well, I don't. I think some of the landowners are not happy now again and that and that the costs are going to continually to go up.
The costs are not going up. It's what he's bid at some thing. So there's no cost to what they're doing right now.
Well, the initial cost was forty nine thousand, but and then we had that meeting. And but the landowners are still not. But anyway, um.
I talked to Opeana and there's no more cost. Other than what his bid was on, not the forty nine, but the with the seeding.
Okay. And then I don't know. There's a, there's an area that they're they're working on, I think, right now and. They said that the normal was like five or six feet. The base was and now it's like almost twenty feet because they dug it and and then sloped so much that. The base is now like really wide. And I says, well, uh maybe after the meeting today I'll run out and.
Yeah, I can run out and check too. I know they've got it. They've uh, I think Dave has run his equipment through there. After they got it leveled out. From what I saw this morning.
Okay. And then also um had a landowner and I already talked to Courtney about it. That was um spreading. Manure and the pipeline that was taken out, not declaring. His uh manure spreader tire went down into the where they had taken the pipe out. So they're not packing it or whatever like they. Had said, but I it and anytime you move soil like that, there's going to be settling, but. But he broke a tow rope on it and not not real happy, so.
Did he reach out to the contractor?
I don't, that I don't know. I'll find out, but I did forward that to him also, so.
Um, I have been working with our drainage attorney, Eric Edie. Um for drainage district side of things to see if there's anything that we can put in place. He did recommend. Um drafting up a letter to send off to him. So that is on my agenda to do this week. And just kind of reaffirming and letting him know that, you know, we expect them to um take care of any damage that may occur over drainage district. Tile or around an open ditch if they removed any tile there. Um, so as soon as I have anything else from them, if I get any feedback from them, I will sure pass that along to you guys for any of the landowners. Um so they kind of have an idea for just district wise and then maybe an idea going forward for their own personal tile. Um, the DD thirty six one that you had just talked about, are you talking about the one they did last year that's closer to highway three? Or the one that they were supposed to be starting this spring, the lateral C that's farther more?
Be lateral. It'd be lateral. Isn't it lateral A?
The new one that they're working on.
The new one, so the C is the one farther north.
Oh. But if you're talking about where they're doing the hydro seeding, that is.
That'll be the initial, yeah.
That's just north of uh highway three.
Yeah, because there's two areas out there that they're working on. The lateral C, which is the one farther north. And that was supposed to start the spring. And then the one they did last year, which is the one that they needed to do the hydro seeding on still, which is the one closer to highway three that you can see right from highway three. I just didn't know which one it was that they were on because I haven't heard if they have started out there on the scene.
That I have not heard either. I know they're finishing up the one that's along I work on highway three.
Okay. I'll probably reach out to Dan Henneger this week.
Yep, I'll reach out to him today. See what's going on.
See when he plans on getting out there and then the progress of the the one closer to three that they did last year. Um. We did have a land owner come in. Um, he owns Radar Enterprises. He owns the property that is just south of Prestige, the east west road between the Agribusiness Park and Prestige. He owns the farm ground right there to the west of the Agribusiness Park. Um, majority of his land is in no man's land, so no drainage district. Um, a little portion of it is in a Wright County District and another little portion is in a joint district with uh Webster County. He came in uh looking for what drainage tile was in the area. We looked it up on the map because you could see by the aerial on beacon that it is a very wet area. Um, there is no drainage file in that area and he is working on. Getting the steps done to be able to go out and pattern tile this area. He wants to. Cross that row between uh Prestige and Agribusiness Park and outlet into the open ditch that is on the other side, which is the joint drainage district open ditch. Um, I let him know that he would have to annex his land in if that was something that he was wanting to do. He couldn't just cross over and outlet there since that was going into a district. Um, he had already stated that he already had his what they mitigation type stuff done and essentially he was gonna go through with it no matter what. Um, he was supposed to stop in the next day to get his paperwork for the annexation stuff and he has yet to come in. This was over a week ago. Uh while Ashley went out and took a look at the other work order, I did ask her to kind of swing by there and just make sure he wasn't out there just going ahead willy nilly and. Um, doing his pattern tiling out there and tying into the district and uh from what Ashley could tell, he hadn't started anything out there yet.
Has been started.
Okay. Actually, we're in the middle of that right now.
Okay.
Is this on the east side of highway seventeen?
West side.
West side of highway seventeen, west of Prestige.
Yes, and west of the Agribusiness Park.
Okay.
It's the three forties along there.
Little bit inside right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
South side of the road.
Um, I have had discussion with our joint attorney, Eric Edie on this one as well. Um, he did also recommend to draft up a letter to send to the the landowner. And just to remind him that if he is wanting to um tile an outlet into that district asset, that he will have to go through the annexation proceedings. Um, he did also make the recommendation that the individual could potentially um create his own district just for that little area. But I haven't looked anymore into that thought on things yet, so.
It would still need an outlet though.
Yeah, we could still have the outlet into that direct drainage district, so. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Anything else for the board for drainage?
I'm good drainage trustees.
All favor?
Aye.
All ayes, thank you. Okay, and that will be as our Board of Supervisors. I need approval of the candidate of agenda.
I would like to table. Item twelve, letter C.
No.
New paperwork.
Oh, okay.
Hey, we have the minute from the previous meeting. What's our, your motions are?
All motion room. Table. I have a second.
All favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
And and the motion is to um.
Table.
Until um new paperwork is drafted. Um, because May fifth may not, may or may not work.
Yes.
Due to the facilities not being ready.
Yep. Hey, can we have the minutes from the last meeting?
April seventh, twenty twenty five, special meeting for property tax levy. Chairman Rasmussen called the special meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine in the members present were Clues, Rasmussen, Luke's, Ellis and Bosch present via Zoom. Verify citizens present and attendance and one citizen present via Zoom for the property tax levy hearing. Mike Denger discussed how his taxes went up eighty percent last year. Assessor Tony Nicholas said that was due to his classification change of his property. Jackie Thompson mentioned discussion that was happening in the state capital in the subcommittees. Rhonda Benton talked about how another county has hog confinement that are costing more to their county than what the confinement are paying in taxes. Motion by Clues second by Ellis to close the public hearing. Motion carries to motion by Clues second by Luke to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Can we uh, those declassification changes from ag to residential, correct? Can we add that to that uh part of the minutes, please? I would motion approve those changes. I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
April seventh, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met as drainage district referees to do the minutes from the drainage meeting. See the drainage district minutes on the county website. Chairman Rasmussen called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine twenty four AM. Members present were Clues, Rasmussen, Luke's. Ellis and Bosch present via Zoom. Motion by Ellis second by Clues to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. The minutes of the previous regular meeting of March thirty first, twenty twenty five were read and approved with one correction. Approved claim for payment. Motion by Clues second by Luke's to approve the union contract for sheriff deputies and jailers effective July first. Angela Westlink with parent connections presented the proclamation for child abuse prevention month. Motion by Clues second by Rasmussen to proclaim April as child abuse prevention month in Wright County. Motion carries. Motion by Ellis and second by Bosch to receive the monthly revenue report for the Wright County Sheriff. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen second by Clues to receive the quarterly revenue report from the Wright County Auditor. Motion carries. Motion by Ellis second by Clues to set the Wright County bu- budget hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six for April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five at nine thirty AM. Motion here. Motion by Luke second by Clues to rescind the motion of the Communications Director's. From March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Motion carries. Motion by Luke and second by Clues to approve the new communications hire pending pre-employment fiscal and drug testing. At a starting wage of twenty one dollars per hour and a fifty cent increase at six months and one year. Along with any salary adjustments set by the Board of Supervisors. Motion carries. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, presented the resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen. Motion by Clues second by Rasmussen to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen, awarding contract for. B R O S dash C zero nine nine, one oh five dash five F dash ninety nine. By roll call vote, ayes, clues, Bosch, Rasmussen, Luke's and Ellis, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirteen, who they passes and reads as follows. You can see the full resume including there. Clements presented the fiscal of the year twenty twenty six secondary roads five year program. Motion by Rasmussen second by Clues to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty second. Secondary roads five year program. Motion carries. Clements presented the fiscal year twenty twenty six Iowa DOT secondary roads budget. Motion by Clues and second by Luke to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty six Iowa DOT secondary road budget. Motion carries. Clements discussed with the board regarding seismic testing. The light testing was completed and the report risk analysis came back. With a zero point five P P B within fifty feet. If the P P D gives within zero point five, the risk goes up. In the current contract that was signed with a two hundred and fifty feet setback, there was a ten year clawback for any damages. Clues does not see why the county should take on the risk. The setbacks will remain the same at two hundred and fifty feet. Clements give an update on the secondary roads department. Motion by Clues second by Ellis to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read.
Just as a note on that uh. Um, on the seismic testing, I did receive uh an email from.
Andy.
Just a moment. Oh, Andy, uh who is with. He's the land representative for Twin Rivers and uh. Uh he was wanting to discuss concerning that. Uh my reply was uh. Because he felt that that precluded them from doing any testing. And my reply to him was that uh the board did not feel that. Uh we were precluding any testing. However, it would require. Twin Rivers to get permission from the individual landowners to go on to their property uh to do the testing. Um therefore they would re-assume the risk for any damage that would be done. I did note in that email. Uh that he should contact the, if they chose to go that route, he should contact the drainage administrator. Courtney Morris to de-conflict with any drainage assets that are out on private property.
Things have been around. Open forum for the public input. Anybody in the public want to speak? If not, we'll go to receiving a quarterly revenue report from the Wright County Recorder.
Any highlights on the quarterly report?
No, pretty much as usual. I'm busy with boats right now.
That time of year, huh?
Yeah, I forget.
And the, are all of the, like the transfer fees was one thousand two hundred and fifty five.
I look at it.
The uh miscellaneous receipts was twenty thousand eight hundred and dollar. Is that included in the front? Total of seventy six thousand dollars. Are those all separate?
So, yeah, they're separate. So the front is what we get to keep.
Okay.
And the back page is the seventy seven thousand. That's what we. That everybody else gets.
Right.
Yeah.
Mostly the state, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you got DNR, um Iowa Department of Public.
I consider that a mistake.
And then we um, you know, collect sales and use tax for Department of Revenue as well. That's not included in the quarterly. I pay that monthly, pay that home monthly with them.
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to receive the Wright County Recorder uh report.
I'm second that.
All favor?
Aye.
That's, that's the quarterly report.
Stephen. You are out. This is Stephen Pullman, Communications Director, to present wage adjustment effective July first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, so as discussed, um I am looking to request that we uh change the wage, starting wage to from twenty one dollars to twenty three fifty. Um, I've been talking with Mike Galloway and we came up with a wage scale. So the starting wage is from the twenty three fifty to twenty nine dollars. Due to if we have anybody that has experience and how many years experience and all that good stuff. So that's what that scale is for. So um we're under what our surrounding counties um are starting their employees at. Um with starting or increasing the starting wage, we would have to, or we should, I believe, it um increase a couple of our employees now. So um I don't, the reason why our wages under what it should be is I don't think that it was. Increased when um raises were given here a few years ago, whatever. We'll discuss that, so.
And you've got this in your budget?
Yes, in fiscal year twenty six. Yep.
So providing you don't have a massive overtime, you'll be fine.
Correct.
But I talked with you on it when you emailed me the.
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
In in the email, there was a reference to uh uh moving to salary versus uh hourly is.
Correct. That is nothing that we're gonna um decide on today. Um I've been doing some research on, you know, the schedule and. Um, they re- really needs to change a little bit. So I think decreasing overtime. Um, if we did something like that, changing the hours, how many, how many hours they work per week. Um, and then going to a salary would be beneficial to everyone. So I am working on that. We'll have to put that into policy. Right, yeah. So, yeah. That made me do.
So you are only looking for us to increase the starting wage from twenty one dollars an hour to twenty three fifty an hour for new employees?
And then uh as well increase a couple of the employees.
I didn't see that.
Yep. So that was in my email. That's the uh four thousand two hundred and ten dollars and twenty eight cents. Is what that would increase for two, well, that's total between two employees.
That'd be effective now or July?
July first. Yep, July first. So then one would be going up to uh twenty four dollars and the other twenty four fifty.
So they're above the starting wage of what?
So they're, yes.
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 So they've been there.
What is the starting wage of surrounding counties?
Okay, so. Um, I'm an average, mom, unless you want me to read them all. But it's twenty two dollars to thirty dollars an hour is what their ranges are. So.
What county has twenty two?
Uh Humboldt. And starting wage Franklin County, Hancock County, Webster County is at twenty four fifty. Um, then I did the city of Clear Lake instead of Saragordo County. They're at twenty two and then up.
So who's at thirty? Would you say thirty dollars?
Um, that goes to thirty dollars. So like their wage scale, like I want to set ours to twenty nine. Their wage goes goes to thirty dollars.
Okay, yeah.
So the average, I did the average Iowa dispatcher wage per hour and it was twenty four dollars is the start for the starting wage.
So the forty two, ten, twenty eight uh increase in the fiscal year twenty six budget. But you can absorb that within the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understand.
Yep. Yeah, we would not be, have to increase, do any amendments or anything to the twenty six budget. So.
Okay, so uh for these employees, my understanding would be then that uh. In the proposed budget, there's a two percent increase in wages for the employees. That would not take, that would not. This would preclude them from receiving that.
Correct.
Okay. Is that clear to everybody? I'm talking about the two people that will be getting the pay raise. I'm not talking about all the employees in that department. Uh, because the person that we just hired and the amendment that we just made last week. That person is a new hire and they would be eligible for the two percent pay increase. But the two employees that are receiving pay increases. Specifically because we're increasing the starting pay. They would not be eligible for the two percent increase.
But the person we just hired, it was at twenty one dollars now.
Yes.
Would be eligible.
For the two percent, yes. But I would, we would leave her at where she's at right now currently and then look at that again when we have to hire somebody else.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the one that we just hired at twenty one will jump July one to twenty three fifty.
No.
No, she'll get the jump.
Two percent.
She'll get the two percent.
Okay, yeah.
And it's six months.
Six months.
And then one year she would get fifty.
Another, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So she'll be at the twenty two, you know, whatever, at that time after eight year.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. But then if we have to hire somebody else, which it, you know, that's happening.
Well, and that's what I'm saying is that then all of a sudden she's behind and you're coming back again.
So I'm going to, yeah, unless, yeah, if you want to increase her now, I mean, absolutely. It's it's in the budget, so.
If I would, if. I would be opposed to.
So July first, she's gonna get a forty two percent increase or forty two cent increase.
Correct.
Is her two percent.
Correct.
And then at six months.
Six months she did fifty cents and in twelve months she would get fifty cents. I would want to change that if you're gonna increase her starting wage to twenty three fifty.
True.
That was not the contract that we hired her under and we agreed to.
So good.
Uh and she agreed to.
So I wanted to leave her at that just because. She's started. She's been here a week.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? And then I know it's a pain. You know what I mean? And then I know it's a pain to, you know, look at it again. And talk about it again, but, okay. But, or do it again, but yeah.
So since you haven't implemented the twenty three. Fifty, does those other two employees need to be adjusted now? Or do you adjust it when you do the new hire?
I would like to, well, no, I would like them to be adjusted in July. Along with the starting wage. So.
So if we have a starting wage of twenty three fifty, are you gonna continue to do the six month and one year additional fifty cents?
That, that would be a discussion. Yeah. Yeah, the reason why I did the fifty cents was to get them up to where they should be. Yeah.
Okay, so my understanding is, is that the request is to make the starting wage twenty three dollars and fifty cents an hour and that. That the two employees. There would be two employees that would receive a pay increase. That's where it's vague. I mean. Are there gonna be, I don't need names in the motion, but I need.
Do you want to see what I have?
Yes, please.
But the board will have to, you know, because we'll do that in July, June.
So when you give your wages.
This is what I printed off because you'll see it folded. This is the range. I mean, this is where.
So then who determines paid as right now?
And then.
Who determines?
The two employees are. This one?
Yep.
This one?
Yep.
Okay. And that increase would, would take effect on July first?
Yes.
Correct.
What is their current wages then?
One is at twenty two sixty six and one is at twenty three thirty four.
And you want to raise under twenty four? Yes.
So I still like saying about the six month and one year fifty cent raises, so. I would consider starting at twenty two fifty and then increasing the wages, that extra dollar by the end of that year. And then we'd, we'd be up to the twenty three fifty.
Last day we give the two, whatever, adjust, wage adjustments in July that we set. You know, when Mike was, Mike Galloway was here, he was talking about. Wages in the communication center and how it's really changed and how the wages have gone.
We're behind. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. And that's where we came up with. At the twenty three fifty to the twenty nine dollars an hour. Scale.
So if somebody comes in with like five years' experience in the communication center, would you start him at twenty nine?
No.
I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because if you look. You don't have very many employees that are even at that. Currently.
So there's a, there's a big, that's a, there's a big. Difference between the lowest paid and somebody that's been there, you know, five years. So. The way it is set now. And then, like I said, I believe that's because of the increase that they had, I don't remember how many years ago it was. That wasn't the back of the blue there, huh?
The back blue?
No, was it, was that what you go with? So. And then the starting wage just stayed the same. My, per my email, I've been told that we're supposed to start, our wages are supposed to be like similar to the jails. Well, where is that, you know, put into writing? So that's another. Handbook. Stuff like that. So we have something in writing.
See, and I never, I don't recall ever. And maybe I wasn't part of that, that kind of communication, but I don't remember ever having the two compared.
Right. Yeah. I couldn't find one either, so.
Yeah.
So do we even need to consider the twenty nine dollars an hour and. On a case by case basis, would you hire an individual with?
I just want to be able to, well, then, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Have the experience.
Whoever I hire then come in and.
Yeah, if you're addressing it anyway.
Something higher than the starting wage.
Correct.
I just, I would like that in writing, yeah. So I can't, I don't want to have to start everybody at that same starting wage. That's why I wanted to skip pace to go. I mean, of course, I would get approval beforehand. Yeah.
So you like the twenty two fifty with a fifty and a fifty at six and twelve months is, are now you're satisfied with the twenty three fifty?
That would increase it to twenty three fifty, correct?
Within a year, a year.
Okay, so you're not satisfied with the twenty three fifty as a starting wage. You would like to have it twenty two fifty with a fifty cent increase at. Six months and a fifty cent increase at twelve months.
Correct.
And, and the part I can see with that, because if you're jumping the two employees to twenty four dollars and to twenty four fifty. If you give an incentive starting at twenty three fifty and you give a fifty and a fifty, well, now you're at, and now you're having to jump them again. So unless you don't.
Stephen, do you think that that's workable for hiring somebody?
Yes, where are we gonna put the other two at? Is that gonna have to be tabled or?
No, I think that, my understanding is that.
Where they're at, okay.
That you would move them up on July first.
Okay, perfect.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Yes.
As an officer, I want the most competent person in that seat.
Obviously.
I've sat in that seat. They don't get paid near enough. You're quibbling over. Four dollars a day at a fifty cent increase.
Very quibbling. We're discussing. We are, we are doing our duty.
You are doing your duty, but as an officer, I've, there's been bad dispatchers.
Understood.
And we want the most competent person in that seat.
I would agree.
And this interview process that we just went through was.
It's terrible. I think the highest paid dispatcher probably doesn't make enough. For what they go through and the emotional stress. I mean, it ranks right up there.
So what do you want to do here?
Do you want to do the fifty and fifty to, as a, as a thing, or do you want to just set it and be done? I want to be able to start them out low, well, at the starting wage and increase it just due to all the training they have to do. And, I mean, it's a lot. So who knows if they're gonna make it to the six months or, you know, the year or whatever. I mean, it's.
Do you have probation period too?
That is the probation period. Well, the six, a year is a probation period per the handbook, so. Yeah. So I guess I would like to request what I initially presented and you guys, you know, decide from there, but.
I would make a motion that we set the starting wage at twenty three dollars and fifty cents flat. Not the range. If you, if you hire somebody with experience and you bring that in before the board, I think that we can work with that, but I. I would set the starting wage at twenty three dollars and fifty cents and I would authorize the two employees that you've designated to us. To receive a pay increase on July first. In lieu of the two percent increase that other employees will receive. Does that make sense, Amanda?
Yes. I'm gonna specifically put the twenty four and the twenty four fifty in the minutes.
Got it.
So. Okay.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye, all ayes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And thanks for bringing this forth to us.
Then I guess Amanda told me I was supposed to say that's in public forum, but it's telecommunications week this week, so. Thank you, dispatcher, when you see it, yes.
Bring it down to Donut Cafe.
If you'll pass that on to your employees from us, we'll, we'll take them.
Okay, Darrell Stevens, Carlisle Economic Development Director. To appoint Kate Garner to Wright County Economic Development Commission. The term will expire twelve thirty one twenty six.
Mr. Chair, we did receive, the Wright County Economic Development Commission did receive a letter of resignation from a long-term member, Todd Foss. With our sincere appreciation for his service for those three, five years. The CDA did make a recommendation of Kate Garner to fill that seat because that is their seat on the commission. The commission did approve and now make a recommendation of the board for the appointment.
Hey Dave, Kate took the place of Todd out at Prairie Energy. So. I would make a motion to appoint Kate Garner to the Wright County Economic Development Commission.
I would second that.
Term. Expired on twelve thirty one twenty six.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Welcome, Kate.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Andrew.
Yes, boss.
You are out.
Watch your knee.
Yeah, I know, the stable's too low.
I wasn't gonna tell, I wanted to hit his knee.
CDA has given me three applications for courthouse ground usage. We'll start with the two that are in, on June thirteenth and June fourteenth, I believe, that's during the festival. And I recommend that you approve those. Any questions on those?
On June thirteenth and June fourteenth.
Correct, those are two separate applications.
What is that family fun night from four to eight on the thirteenth? And on the fourteenth, it's Festival for Kids Zone Activities, ten AM to four PM.
Correct. And will they need their use in the yard and will that be, or you coordinated that with them or through them?
We'll figure it out. Yes, should go good. And the second one you received has multiple dates from CDA.
We tabled that.
Yes, and I recommend you to be tabled out already, only because of the fifth of May is not very far away. And I believe the yard is not safe for usage in its current condition. Until we get that fixed, hopefully, if they feel free to resubmit application for the latter three dates starting June second, we could probably go forward with that, but not before. May on there.
June second or June twelve?
That is a twelve, sorry, I read that as a slide from Jay's machine. So that's my recommendation. Is there any question?
Most should approve the June thirteenth and fourteenth use of the courthouse, courthouse grounds by the CDA.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
So if you please sign those two, there's two, should we took out each?
Yeah, fine. I'll figure it out.
Yeah, I'll get it at the end of the meeting.
And then you're gonna coordinate with.
I'll talk to the CDA about resubmitting without that made. Not that we can't get my made, but I. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
But we'll do that.
I'll get with you. Kate received the Wright County Twenty Twenty Four Central Service Cost Allocation Plan and have the chairman sign the Certification of Cost Allocation Plan. You wanna read this, Dave?
This, this is a company that goes out and. Make sure that we are being reimbursed. Through grants, mostly federal grants, I think, but probably state grants also that ensures that we are being reimbursed for. All of the things that we are eligible for. A specific office may not. May deal with an issue and, and the cost allocation. People, company, I don't know how to refer to them. They go out and they say, this is worth this much and you should submit this as part of the cost. So we're spending a small amount of dollars to. Be compensated for the time that we actually spend. Is that a good description?
So like for DHS or DHHS, we will get reimbursed twelve thousand seventy seven dollars. And then our public health department. They had a total indirect cost of ninety one thousand two hundred forty four dollars. For like the title, the title. Nineteen.
Nineteen, correct, yeah.
So whether they get the full ninety one thousand, I, and it's, and it's kind of a year, actually, it's. From the open reports. So I'm not quite sure what they will get reimbursed, the public health department, but they had indirect costs of ninety one thousand.
That, that we wouldn't have been able to even apply for without.
Doing the.
These people doing the, the cost analysis.
Correct.
So it costs, this contract costs us four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and potentially the public health department could be reimbursed ninety one thousand dollars and some change. And DHS, another twelve thousand and seventy seven dollars. So I would make a motion to.
Receive.
Prove the contract with cost allocation. Central Service Cost Allocation Plan.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
And have the chairman sign.
Yes, and have the chairman sign.
Thank you. Hey. Jeremyavis, Assistant to the Wright County Engineer. Give us an update, please.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, for the week of. Last week, ladies, we're, we're in entire mortar grader districts right now. So we are in full blade mode. Trucks, all in spot rock granite material to spot rock locations. So maintainers identify areas that need covered up, trucks deliver to them. Trucks are also doing some removal of traditional snow fences on hard surface routes. We did complete thirty nine work orders last week. And officially today, Wright County Secondary Roads will start their ten hour workdays. So Monday through Thursday, ten hour days. Showed you guys a picture of the bridge, bridge update. Looks like if we're on schedule, if we can stay on the schedule. Probably gonna be pouring that deck mid, mid to late May. So then road would be, I, I, I would see it in the first parts of June being open, so. If the weather doesn't change. And then update on yesterday, we had some crew in working on that bridge that was on fire. So we got that knocked down for the fire department at their request and then today we're cleaning up. So I got.
You'll haul that material out or?
We are gonna, we're gonna haul it out just because it's a creosote material. We're gonna haul it out, we're gonna bring it to a specified location that we have.
Good.
But yeah, we thought best not to. And, and we were in talks yesterday with Adam. He's at the National Association of Engineers.
Correct.
And, and he suggested saying, don't let that stuff sit in the water.
And that was a bridge that was closed on three hundred.
Three Hundred Street between Madison and Lee.
And Lee.
Yeah.
Just been closed for a number of years. It was, it caught fire. Um just been closed for a number of years, it was, it caught fire uh with some local burning that was being done. And um and the fire department, they couldn't get it out. Take it down, three fire departments, so.
So yeah, now we got crews out there putting back up, cause it is official road close sign to both intersections, but barricades melted. Um so we're out repairing that today to put that back up, just so it's safe, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question is, do we still have some more riprap or have you ground that all up?
Uh no, we have some, yeah, 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 we haven't gathered over to you Grove in preparation for it.
Okay.
So we, we collected it all, bring it to you Grove, and then we bring that crusher into that site and produce our material.
Cause I think in that dredge ditch that they're working on, and I don't know if we can get some or buy some or whatever. Some riprap is gonna be needed.
Yeah, we always keep some on hand, we never grind it all up, just for those situations for us too, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Any old business? Any new business? Needing?
The Eric Simonson is, is looking at the um law library to see.
They wanna keep this, they don't want us to use it for anything, but now it's a possibility we can get rid of some of the.
Get rid of the books.
Get the weight off of it. That's all about.
I'm, I'm kind of surprised that they want that much space because they have, you know, they remodeled and we did so much. At the courtroom and behind there in the offices.
But I can see it interfering with uh if they got a court case going on up there, if you have an office in there or something. I understand his reasoning. Update on meetings.
I have the IDDA board meeting and you wanted to attend that. Um that's on a Wednesday uh at nine thirty in Alamo County, it's all the travel in there.
Anybody else?
There's a uh property tax legislation meeting here at ten o'clock on Friday. So anybody that's interested should come to that.
And it's here at this, who is Chambers, Chris.
Or who reserved it? Jack reserved it, okay.
Anything else for the board?
Want to do a journey?
All in favor? All eyes.